To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Singh.
Here.
Kramer.
Here.
Right next.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
I start tonight speaking always from good and positive things, and we're always up for good and positive things. But tonight, I'm just going to read the proclamation. Whereas Key Club International is a self-governing student organization where each year key club members elect their student officers at district and international levels during club meetings and district international conventions, and whereas individual key clubs belong to divisions which belong to districts which comprise Key Club International. And whereas the Shuklemy High School Key Club is the oldest Key Club in Pennsylvania, whereas the Shuklemy High School Key Club is being honored for winning first place in the non-traditional scrapbook contest during the 2017 Key Club International Convention held in San Antonio, Texas from July 5th through the 9th. And whereas their scrapbook was created in a suitcase which was filled with layouts of its projects from each story, having six to eight different items to completely represent a project, the club also created a book that told the story of the places and the people serving between 2016 and March 2017 district conventions. The club has placed at the International Convention four out of the last five years. Whereas the club is comprised of students Craig Purcell, Brooke Brown, Cecilia Schellenberger, Margaret Karpinski, CJ Reader, Karina Morden, Ruth Molino, Olaiya, I'm sorry about that, Kelsey Rude, Ford Yocum, and Amy Grozer, and is guided by advisors Marcia Coff and Tanya Reader. So now therefore I, David Elfrasen, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury North County of Northumberland Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of all our city council members and citizens of Sunbury, do hereby proclaim August 14th, 2017, as Shuklemy High School Key Club Day in the city, and urge all citizens to congratulate the members and thank them for their volunteerism. Congratulations. The advisors, of course, they don't know it. I think I know that regularly.
You do know it regularly.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
I'll tell you what, a lot of key people live there, because we have some other distinguished guests here, I'm sure they're gonna...
Do you want to show, you want to talk about time? Yeah, okay.
Why don't you get in front, so you're not locked out?
That way they can see you.
You want to, okay. And then we'll just have these people, you want to see your book first, or you want to give them? You go ahead first.
I'll go first. Okay, so thank you so much for having us here and honoring us tonight. Our kids work very, very hard all year long to provide community service, and like we like to say, thank your community service for fun. So every year, we have the opportunity to create different contests that we partake in, and we compete at the district convention, which is held in March of each year. This year, we were in Harrisburg, and you have the opportunity to compete in a traditional scrapbook or a non-traditional scrapbook. Our kids choose to do the non-traditional, which means it's not a 12 by 12, here's a book, look through it. Ours is a little different. We create a theme, so this year's theme that the kids came up with is, oh, the places you'll go and the people you'll serve. And we knew we had to get our book to San Antonio if we placed at the district convention level, and that's why we came up with suitcase. We knew we were flying, suitcase is travel. So there are six different categories that we have to represent our books from, and so what we did was we created mini suitcases in our suitcase, because if you're going to go somewhere, you're going to take a suitcase. So there are six categories, and then to take it a step further, what would you find in a suitcase? Well, in a suitcase, you would find...pants, pants. You need bottoms. Need bottoms. You would find shoes of all different sorts.
That is cute.
You would find toiletries. So we would have soap. You can't go anywhere without your pillow.
Your toothbrush.
Your toothbrush and toothpaste. You gotta take a camera, because that's how you create your scrapbook.
A blankie or towel, depending on where you're going. You're going swimming.
A hairbrush. You would have shirts, and of course, you wouldn't wear the same shirt, so each shirt in your suitcase would be different.
You've got to get there, though. Oh, the places you'll go. Maybe it's by airplane, or a little wagon. I think my favorite, though, was the school bus. Oopsie. I don't want to go.
And then, of course, your going places. So we chose states that are important to the Key Club world. Of course, Texas, because that's where our International Convention was this year. Florida, because that's where the first International Convention was ever held. New Jersey, because that's where this past...
That's where Indiana.
Oh, Indiana. New Jersey, because that's where our International President was from. Indiana, because that is where the headquarters for Kiwanis and Key Club is located. California, because that's where the very first Key Club started, and of course, our home club of the state of Pennsylvania. But then within each of those different books are the pictures and the kids' journals, and they told a story about what our club did for the last year, Maggie's projects. So...
And Cecilia, Maggie, and CJ are just three of the kids on the committee that helped, the other kids on the committee that you named, and they're just some of our approximately 40, 42 kids that without them, that whole group, there wouldn't have been projects that have scrapbooked about, so.
But these are three of the five high school students that traveled with us to San Antonio this year. They experienced not only the convention, but for some kids, Key Club may be the only time those kids get out of the area, and so we make sure that they actually get to go do stuff while they're there. We went and we saw the Alamo. We did a 5K walking tour where we saw the highlights of the area. Our hotel was literally right on the Riverwalk, so the kids were able to go down there and experience true Texan culture. We took them to the San Antonio Zoo, the Ripley's Museum, Venus Museum. So I mean, we make sure that these kids get the experience of a lifetime when we take them to these places, and we're just so blessed that we have kids who want to do that and want to serve and want to give back to not only Sunbury, but the state of Pennsylvania, the United States, the entire world, because that's what Key Club is all about. It's an international organization, and we are 277,000 members strong across the whole entire world, and we do what we can to make a difference for those who need.
Do you want to move down, like, we're timed a little bit?
Thank you, council for having us here, and everyone for coming, and everybody for watching, these tremendous students and their coaches. You know, you think about, why didn't they get recognition when they first won? Where were the fire trucks when they came into town? Well, that's because you don't see them practicing on the fields when you drive by the high school, or you don't see them at the tennis courts, because they're taking pictures and they're doing their project. But you do see them in the community. That's kind of their practice. You see them at Toys for Tots, and what are some of the other projects you guys do?
Kids at Children's Miracle Network Call-a-thon.
Caring for Kids, which is like in, within the high school and the school district.
We do the Starbury, like, breakfast for Santa, down on the second street.
That's just a few. All those cards that we're flipping, and all those articles of clothing, or all the projects they do. So you do see them in the community, you just don't equate it with winning national or international awards. And they are the oldest club in Pennsylvania, and I have to tell you, there's somebody a little older than you here that was a member of Key Club back in the day. He's going to tell you about it. But this is a momentous occasion. I'm honored to be your representative, I'm honored to be able to represent you in Harrisburg, and we have a house citation for each one of the members of the Key Club and their coaches and for this school that commemorates this huge win and this huge opportunity in their lives, lists every student's name, lists that we are the oldest Key Club, and it's a part of Pennsylvania history as long as Pennsylvania's here. So this is a momentous occasion in all your lives. You're never going to forget this achievement. This is a big deal. So I'm so glad everybody's here to celebrate with them today, and congratulations to each one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to go next?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Peggy Reitner-Bach, and I am a field representative with Congressman Barletta, and he sends his well wishes, but he couldn't be here tonight due to another obligation, so he asked me to bring along the letter that he wrote for you, and I will read this briefly, but I just realized three very important things when I was listening to the mayor and listening to Representative Culver. The first thing is that if you're planning to go on to college, I think any circle key group would be honored to have you, and I think that if you graduate college or go on into working in your communities, that any Kiwanis club will be honored to have you. So I hope that you continue with that line of service as you go. And thirdly, I think I'd like to hire all of you to finish all the scrapbooks that I started on my daughter's, too, and she's now 22, that I still see her in the drawer somewhere, because I don't have that skill. At any rate, the congressman says this, "Dear members of the Shuklemy Key Club, I write to congratulate you on receiving first place in the non-traditional scrapbook contest during the 2017 Key Club International Convention. This is an outstanding achievement of which you all should be proud. This award is a well-deserved recognition of the Key Club's creativity, dedication, and hard work. Having represented the oldest Key Club in Pennsylvania at the International Convention in four out of the five, last five years, excuse me, there is no doubt that the Shuklemy High School Key Club is unparalleled in creative skills, teamwork, and unwavering dedication. Earning first place this year in the non-traditional scrapbook contest is yet another success that can be added to the club's already impressive list of stellar accomplishments. Cage, Brooke, Cecilia, Margaret, CJ, Karina, Ruth, Kelsey, Ford, and Amy, please accept my best wishes and congratulations as each of you celebrate this outstanding achievement. I look forward to hearing of more great accomplishments in your future endeavors. It remains an honor to serve each of you in the House of Representatives. All my best, Lou Barletta, Member of the Congress." So, thank you.
Rick, stand.
Hello, I'm Rick Shawk, I'm the chairman of the board commissioners in Northumberland County, and our vice chair, Sandra Katana, is here as well. We wanted to take this opportunity as well to congratulate the Key Club and recognize all they do in the community. I know you certainly have two great advisors, the editor, Scoof. We've, you know, I've interacted with my own kids in school, and we've learned a lot from both of us. We have a proclamation we put together, and we only have one, we don't have one for each of you, and obviously that's because ours are much more expensive. We are going to formally approve this in our meeting in September, and if you give us a number, maybe even all the names of the kids in the Key Club, we can have another one done that actually specifies my name, and they can each have one that they can put in with themselves. But I'll just read the proclamation. Whereas the Shuklemy High School Key Club has brought recognition to the city of Sunbury by winning first place in the non-traditional scrapbook contest, and whereas the Key Club was honored at the 2017 Key Club International Convention held in San Antonio, Texas, from July 5th through July 9th, 2017, whereas the success of the Shuklemy High School Key Club is due to great effort put forth by the club members who committed themselves to achieving their best for Shuklemy High School and to the dedication of the club's advisors. Now therefore, we, the Northumberland County Commissioners, do hereby recognize the accomplishments of the Shuklemy High School Key Club and congratulate them on winning in the non-traditional scrapbook contest. We wish all the Key Club members the very best in their academic and lifetime endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Last but not least, the mayor of Northumberland.
Well, I want to mention that 51 years ago, I was in the Key Club, Shuklemy. In fact, two of our council people, Councilwoman Kramer and Councilwoman Rick Reitner, they were part of the class of '66. We all started school, and we were seniors, we were 15, we weren't 18. There was, there was an article, the Reading Eagle did an article on September the 28th, or I'm sorry, November 28th, 1965, and you'll see the Key Club, the officers, and that gentleman there on the left with the hair, that was me. So, I have hair after 51 years of having, but I'll let you all look at this, you probably never saw this before.
No.
Okay. And then we get a copy for you, so I'll pass that around.
That would be wonderful, because next year's our 75th birthday, and we'd like to do a section in the whole, so we will be contacting definitely the three of you now that we know this. We're looking for alumni, because it's our 75th birthday.
Okay.
Your thoughts and opinions, what you remember about Key Club, what you learned from it, and we want to do a section just on the history of our background. So we will be contacting you guys for your input on that.
So I have a question, how many water balloons did you all have at the convention? Back in our day, they used to throw water balloons out of hotel rooms.
No water, no water.
They all put that in the press.
Fire trucks, because too many kids overloaded the elevator, though.
There you go.
We need the fire trucks now.
As I get into bowling one, I did get lost, I am at the city council meeting, and we have so many heat tours in the borough, I didn't find my way here. But I would like to read this and congratulate all of you for your service, and as you go up in years, serve, serve, serve. Be a volunteer, that's really important in this country. It makes it a strong country because people volunteer. And everybody here volunteers, and I'm sure there are a lot of volunteers out here, and we're all proud of you. Whereas the Shuklemy High School Key Club won first place in the non-traditional scrapbook contest during the 2017 Key Club International Convention in San Antonio, Texas, from July 5th through July 9th, 2017, and whereas the Shuklemy High School Key Club recognized as the oldest Key Club in Pennsylvania, created its non-traditional scrapbook in a suitcase filled with layouts of its projects, with each compartment having six to eight different items to completely represent a project, and whereas the Shuklemy High School Key Club placed at the International Convention in four of the last five years, and whereas the Shuklemy High School Key Club created a book to tell the story of the places and people served by the club between the March 2016 and March 2017 district conventions, under the guidance of advisors Marc Cuff, did I say that right?
Marcia Cuff, yep.
Marcia Cuff and Tanya Reader. The members of the Shuklemy High School Key Club are, I know we mentioned this before, but I want to read your all names again. Cage Purcell, Brooke Brown, Cecilia Schellenberger, Margaret Karpinski, CJ Reader, Karina Morden, Ruth Molino Oyola, did I say that right?
Oyola.
Oh, okay. Kelsey Rude, Ford Yocum, and Amy Grozer. Now therefore, I, Leonard M. Zabory, Mayor of the borough of Northumberland, as representative of the citizens of Northumberland, do hereby issue this proclamation recognizing their accomplishment and pursuit of excellence. Signed, Leonard M. Zabory, Mayor, August 14th, 2017. Congratulations.
If you need any help from the alumni, let us know.
We will be contacting you, yes. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay. On a quick side note before we leave, we didn't actually introduce who we had with us, we just said that this year. This is Cecilia Schellenberger, she is our current club president, she will be a junior this year, and she's actually wearing our shirts that we had created specifically for district convention, or for international convention. It has the theme on the front.
Yeah.
But then, of course, you can't go to Texas without remembering the Alamo, so our mascot for Pennsylvania is a flamingo, so instead of remember the Alamo, we had remember the flamingo. They're native to Pennsylvania. And then next is CJ Reader. He is actually the two-term lieutenant governor, which is one of the officers for the state. He held the position his sophomore and junior year, he's going to be a senior, actually in two days, because he goes to the tech. And then on the end, we have Maggie Karpinski, she is actually our current lieutenant governor. We are very proud to have not just club leadership, but we have leadership from the state level in our club, too. So our kids work really, really hard, and again, we thank you so much for having us here, it means a lot to the kids. They don't do community service for recognition, so that's why you don't always necessarily see us in the newspaper or out and about, okay? They do community service because they find it fun, and that's what they want to do. So, thank you again so much for having us, we really appreciate it. Congratulations. Guest speaker's at Kiwanis now.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take care.
We're going from one to another.
Are you kidding?
Thank you so much. We're going to Kiwanis now, we're the guest speakers.
Take care.
Okay, how about group of minutes on the fire department.
Kramer? Right next. And that's the place where the...
Yes.
Chris Singh.
Yes.
A photocopy of this section.
Before we get into the, to hold the meeting up for the CDVG, is there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time?
Over there, the council secretary.
Okay, we are now going to put this meeting on hold and turn this over to Linda from Cedar Park.
One, thank you. Let us go back to Paul. So, there's a sign in the sheet circulating looks like this around the table, I'm not sure. Oh, you got it all the way in the end, you guys remember. If I could ask the audience to sign, too, and if you run out of, just right on the back, we, we need to show any public input if you need today, and it looks like the CDVG program or the state to know how you came up here tonight, so if yours registers, be in the audience, please sign, and let us know if you're here. Tonight's the final public hearing for the community public block grant application of 2017. I was here before, additional public hearing, and tonight's the night we finalize the projects and the grants in review. This year's CDVG allocation for the city of Sunbury ended up being $269,615, which is about a $1,500 decrease over last year, which is across the board in Pennsylvania. Projects selected for funding for 2017 are Chestnut Street area milling and paving at $189,985, clearance and demolition 2017 for $28,110, Sunbury Fire Department for $3,000, and administration of $48,500. Are there any questions on the projects that we're proposing or mentioning? I'm going to read to you a resolution that the council will be passing when the regular meeting is put back into place. A resolution of the city of Sunbury Commonwealth, I shouldn't say it'll be passing, but a resolution of the city of Sunbury Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for February fiscal year 2017 under the Community Development Block Grant Program, further certifying compliance with the requirements of the program. Where it's necessary in the public interest of the city of Sunbury to receive funds through the Commonwealth, through the Department of Community Economic Development, whereas the Sunbury City Council has the legal authority and responsibility under Act 179 to apply for community development block grant funds, whereas the Sunbury City Council has undertaken a considerable community participation process, including two public hearings, legal notices, all of which culminated in the prioritization of projects and the development of a community development plan, and whereas the Sunbury City Council is familiar with the requirements of the program as included in the statement of assurances, the city wishes to apply for said funds. So be it resolved by the city of Sunbury that its mayor is authorized to prepare by the Cedar Park Council of Governments, Community Development Program staff, the necessary forms and documents in order to submit an application to the Department of Community and Economic Development for CDVG grant funds, be it further resolved that the community development plan developed as a result of the citizen participation process and municipal information gathering is hereby adopted, and be it further resolved that the mayor of the city of Sunbury is empowered to place his signature on behalf of the governing body on necessary application forms and affix there to the official seal of the city. That's the resolution that will be voted on later after this public hearing closes. So this is the opportunity for the public to have any final input into the projects that have been chosen. Yes, Regina?
Um, why, Regina Russell, community activist, why is the resolution necessary?
It's required by the Act 179, the law that governs the CDVG program. And it's actually, it's a formal resolution that allows the mayor to sign the documents.
So we have this resolution for every time they apply for a fee grants?
Every year, yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, this is every year. And every year, there's a community development plan and how that works, and I do have a copy, the council people have all been given copies. We keep records on the projects that have come up, what the public, your sidewalk request is in the community development plan, as a matter of fact. So when folks put in requests for projects that end up not getting funded for any reason, because funds really are scarce and the needs are huge, those are projects that were reported in the community development plan, along with demographics and information about the city, the needs of the city, and the most pressing issues. So that's, that's something that goes along with this application. Any other questions? Any public comment at all? Because this is, this is the last opportunity to comment on this round of funding for 2017. Hearing none, I would ask that the, we gave the votes this time of public hearing.
Okay, the meeting is now adjourned.
Linda, you want them to vote on the resolution? Please. And then, are you going to explain the resolution in the last? Yes, I will.
All right, we'll do the resolution first. You guys don't have copies of it, but it's exactly what Linda just read to us, so can you motion to accept the resolution? You send it?
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
All right, we have an amendment. Yeah, we're going to use the amendment first, Linda?
Yes. I'm presenting information on behalf of CES Engineering, who is the engineering service providing work to the Chestnut Street project. With all CDVG projects, the services are procured ahead of time, quotes are given, and it's my job to make sure that all the invoices come in in equal quotes, so if there's a change in the scope of work that's needed, we do an amendment. And tonight, we have amendment number one to the Chestnut Street Professional Engineering Services Agreement, where we will be, where the council will consider adding an additional fee of $25,000 to the original contract amount of $122,500, and this, this additional fee is expressed only for inspection services that were not included in the original agreement. Any questions on that?
Regina Russell, community activist, so when, when a contractor puts in a proposal, wouldn't it be standard to have a line for the inspection? Why would inspection be added afterwards?
You know, that is a good question.
The question is, the answer, Mr. Henry, is the fact initially, we were gonna do it in-house, locally. But we found it would be cheaper by contracting through CES.
If we were making the adjustment to pay someone, why wasn't that in the bid? Even though it's cheaper, why wasn't in the bid?
Because I think I can answer that one. When you do, when you put a bid out for CDVG services, you can't include other labor. So if you were gonna do it in-house, the cost of the in-house work could not be part of the CDVG bid.
It can be now.
If you, if you authorize it to be. Only if you authorize it to be. It is pretty common, Regina, just so you know, sometimes, quite frankly, engineers forget things. You know, they're human, too. Sometimes things come up that need to be taken into consideration that weren't thought of before. Sometimes a project will incur something unexpected. There's a lot of reasons why amendments happen. In this case, it was a change in the decision as to who was gonna provide service.
I just want to understand, because to me, when someone gets a bid, in that bid, I would think that they would have a line item to say for other incidentals. And that would have been included in the bid that was accepted, instead of coming back and asking for that additional $25,000. Because then it, the bid, if the bid was $200,000, now it's really $225,000.
That is the purpose of the amendment. If I'm, I was not here for the original bid, Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding of this process is that the inspection services that you're now seeing an amendment request on were not included in the original bid. So everybody who, who put in a proposal for that bid, none of them bid on the engineering inspection services because it wasn't included in the, in the original bid. That's why it's part of the amendment.
One more question, please. So now, on that 25, additional $25,000, Cedar Park gets their 18% on that?
No, our 18% comes off the top.
All right, thank you.
So when we, when you, we just voted on administration tonight for $48,000.
Yes.
That's all Cedar Park will get. It doesn't matter if, it doesn't matter how many hours I put in here. There's no additional charge. It's a straight 18% of the, of the contract price.
Thank you.
Sure, anytime. Any other questions? Any other questions?
See, none? You motion to accept? Make that motion for the change. That's not bad.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Crisine?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Who will pay invoice, 17 or 18? Jim?
We have invoices of...
Wait a second. Do you want this $6,000 one separate from the other invoices we're approving tonight?
It doesn't have to be unless you want it for some reason.
I have it here twice, but you can do them all together. Okay. Now we're at $2,000.
Invoices for CES, one invoice here is for $6,000. One for $5,000, and one for $7,201.75. Should be up to total.
That would be $18,231.75.
Thank you. Make that form a looking.
Ister?
Yes.
Crisine?
Yes.